Will the clerk please call the roll?
Martin.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Haniford.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Go ahead, Callie Eckhart and Sherman.
Please call that. Sherman Eckhart.
All right, we have a forum, we'll go ahead and get started. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items would concern, items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda at place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 15, 2020. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $155,680.91 and payroll expenses of $297,274.88. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Have the motion by Mr. Stelling and second by Mr. Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Haniford.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. Item A is the Alba Hospital Authority Meeting on June 23rd, Dr. Haniford.
We heard the CEO and CFO's report. Of course, we've got, we just started with Dr. Galbraith here in July across the street. We're glad to have him on board and to our community. We approved the operating budget, the capital budget for the hospital, for the convalescent home and for the homestead. We had two new approvals for courtesy staff. We approved our FOIA report and heard various reports from the St. Anthony's Foundation, Homestead and the shared convalescence. I will say the budget, I know the paper put the, had a good article on the budget. The COVID money is going to be very imperative next year for the hospital on the report. That's going to be put in a separate account where we've got, like I've told you during the year, we've got the PPE and then also the more money for loss revenue that they've sent back and they're going to be basically using it throughout the year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Haniford? Thank you, Bill. Next item is the Public Library Board Meeting on July 6, 2020. Angelica, can you get a sub date?
I was not at the meeting, however, I do have the minutes here. It looks like they reviewed the approved budget and talked about the fact they have implemented some new alternative summer reading program activities and they're handing out bags to kids that would like to have that information. And then it looks like coming up next week, there's going to be a live online performance by Monty Harper. I think he's a recurring performer that comes to the summer reading program, so that would be something to look forward to. And then also the library is putting together some activity bags for older elementary and middle school age kids. So if you've got children in that age group, I know that they are handing out a lot of those bags. There are lots of things like MacGyver projects and cross stitch projects, different activities, how to learn to play some card games. And then they elected board members for this year. And that was, looks like about all the things they handled during that meeting.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is Personnel Committee Meeting on July 13, 2020, Dr. Haniford.
We met and really talked about different positions that need to be filled or looked at for the upcoming year. Our new city business manager came up with some structural changes with that kind of a new organizational chart where she thinks it can be beneficial to the city in terms of some savings, but also makes some more efficiencies for the city. Maybe some office work that's going to also help, not only in there with some billing, but also with our fire department or police department. And then continue to look at that public works position as well. And that's the majority of our, was our conversation. If there's any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Haniford? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Regional Airport Commission Meeting on July 13, 2020. In addition to the routine business, approving minutes and hearing the managers' report and the council report, we did have a discussion and action regarding the FAA complaint evaluation. The commission did vote to approve a 10-year repayment plan with two different notes, one being for the amount that was borrowed from the 2018 fiscal year and one from the 2019 fiscal year. And the approval of that was not necessary for the FAA, but it was good to have the commission come out in support of a plan for that repayment. Hopefully 10 years is going to be not needed and that that repayment is accomplished much more quickly. But that's, those are terms that are acceptable to the FAA and to the commission members. So that's, and it's terms that we feel like will fit into our current cash situation in order to accomplish it as well. Other than that, there was no more business discussed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is, on the repayment plan, was 10 years the longest we could go? Or was that just what we agreed to? How did?
And you can jump in, Angelica, but that is the longest term we looked at that we felt was reasonable. And I suppose the FAA would have been okay with any terms that the airport commission felt was reasonable as well.
And I would just say to clarify, we have submitted that to the FAA. We have not received approval on it yet, but it was, I guess, understood that there are other places that have had borrowed monies and they had much longer repayment plans. And so we felt like this would be agreeable to the FAA and we still haven't received, we haven't received confirmation that they've set back at this time.
In that proposal, I know based on what we've been told, there was a, you know, it has to be paid back with interest. What was the agreed upon interest rate in that?
3%.
3%?
Right.
And what is, is it paid monthly, yearly, how is that?
Annually.
It's being paid back annually?
So we've already started the process of putting money into savings each month. So then when we get to the end of the year, we'll have that payment set aside.
Is there any reason it couldn't be paid monthly? Or is that, was that just done for?
That was one of the suggestions that was given.
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions regarding the airport? Thank you. Next item is the Alpa Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on July 15, 2020, Connor.
Really quick meeting, it was just one event that requested. Lights Over Alba, I think this is the third year now that they'll be putting on an event. They asked for the same amount as they have the years past unanimously agreed to, about that. Was it? Any questions?
Does the council have any questions?
They took back the three that have canceled, they got that much, they?
Yep. Anybody, any of the events that were canceled in the last?
They took it back, yes.
Right.
And that was the full amount that they asked, the 5100?
Yeah, and that was actually, it was a hundred dollars less than last year, I think, that they requested. I mean, right online, I think it was maybe 5,000 or 5,200 the year before that, so.
Any further questions? Thank you, Connor. Next item is Finance Committee Meeting on July 20th, Dr. Haniford.
We just got done meeting, reviewed and signed our claims. Some of them were large claims. General fund, we had our audit prep fee, which was a little over 12,000, some bulk fuel, about 7,000. And we had debt services and AEDA of about 16,000 and AUA of a little over 57,000. And then also, if you make sure everybody recognized, you saw the large payroll. We did have three pay periods that we had this month. We also met at the end of June 30th. Our cash balances were a little over 150,000 and our investments was a little over 1.5 million. We did meet with our treasurer today, we had some CDs that basically came up and we decided to reinvest all those into either short-term or long-term CDs. Sales tax, we collected a little over about 323,000. That was down about 11% from last year and just about 4% from month to month of this year. And then I think the general fund and all that, city manager probably talked about that in her report, so be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I will say the revenues and expense reports from the departments, expect to have those out to all city council members probably by the end of the week, so everybody can see that. And then also just want to give kind of our department heads and our departments have been doing a great job by watching the budgets and just want to say the council really appreciates that from all the departments. Now I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions?
Correct me if I'm wrong, when Angelica was kind of started taking over, the cash balance was ranging around 30 to 50,000, right? So we've had almost a hundred thousand dollar increase in our cash balance. I mean, I know that that fluctuates some, but, so.
Hopefully we'll have a little bit, you know, another good one. And this was good because we did have some large payments for our pay period, which was.
We had a pay period fall on July 2nd, so we had to have money set back because we had to pay payroll before sales tax payment came in. So it was a little bit higher due to that fact we were setting money aside for that.
But that's nice to have that set aside, so.
Do you feel that the sales tax are being turned down from all areas?
We are monitoring that. I haven't looked at, I will tell you, as of the end of last quarter, I haven't looked to see, you know, we get the comparison of what areas have submitted their sales tax to us. And I haven't taken a look at that since the end of the last quarter. So that's something I'll be looking at and maybe go to my next meeting.
Any further questions for the Finance Committee? Thank you. Next item is the City Mayor's Report. I will just let you guys know, if you haven't been getting emails, OML has been really watching what's going on with coronavirus statewide and they've canceled about all of their in-person training for the foreseeable future. So I understand they're looking at, you know, some online options for, you know, different types of training. But I know the mayor's summer conference has been canceled, the fall annual conference has been canceled. And so they're, they're working to try to figure out other ways that they can meet the education needs for municipalities. There have been quite a few changes in the way the state's reporting their coronavirus data and I encourage you to probably, if you want to see where everything's, you know, at day to day, at the bottom of the main coronavirus page for the state health department, there is a spot where you can see how things break out by county and by city. It'll tell you the total number of cases, the number of deaths and the number of recovered. So you can kind of do the math and find out how many are still active in your, either community or county. As people are traveling, that just encourages citizens to keep, keep an eye on that stuff because some counties have a much higher prevalence of the virus than others. And we've been pretty fortunate here in Alba that we're not having the incidents of an active virus that maybe, you know, some of the other counties are having. Which also means we're not having to have the fights in city council over whether or not to wear masks and whatnot. So I'm glad of that. The, and I wanted to point out that the school is getting ready to start back up here in, I guess, less than a month now. And I give a big shout out to folks of our community and the businesses because it's my understanding that there won't be a single Alba public school student that has to buy any school supplies this year. And that's, I think, a pretty cool thing. At least worth sharing with everybody, so. Other than that, I've been trying to spend some time with Angelica during the transition and, you know, probably not as much as I'd like to, but I think Angelica's transitioning things very well. She is implementing the financial policies internally as we would wish for her to with regard to accountability within the departments. And she's working to, you know, get the right people in the right places to, on the staffing, to get us where we need to be. So she's really doing a great job. She would like to be further along than she is, but I think given the circumstances, she's, she's doing really well with this transition and thank you, Angelica, for what you are doing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody would have.
Not a question, but I do believe the school supplies do not include the high school students.
It's not, okay.
It's up through middle school. I could be wrong on that, but I believe that's what I saw. I saw it as, right before I came in here, so.
I think you're right, now that I, it was close, so.
But still.
Those high school students.
But they don't have a, they don't have a specific system like this.
Yeah, yeah, there's, that's much more.
Any other comments or questions? Next item is the City Business Manager's Report, Ms. Brady.
I guess I'd just like to talk a little bit about what we have going on, what we've been doing. The department heads have been doing a lot of learning. As Dr. Haniford mentioned, we are working to make our department heads responsible for their budget. So they've been learning how to manage that budget a little bit differently than we have in years past. Not only are we looking at what they have for their budget as a whole for each year, we're breaking it down by month. And as sales tax revenue comes in or as the revenue for the respective department comes in each month, we are making adjustments to their monthly budget goals that they have to meet. So there's a lot of learning going on for our department heads. I think they're doing a great job. In fact, I really feel like they're probably being more conservative with their spending than I would be. So I've turned that responsibility as far as, you know, what decisions they get to make for their budget back over to them. I feel like it's, it's going well. There's many of them here tonight, they may tell you differently, but I think it's going really well. But they've, they've learned a lot and have taken on a lot of new challenges this month. We have some open positions. I know many of you know that Fire Chief Treacle, he's on vacation until he officially retires in September. So we'll be looking at how, what changes we need to make in the fire department upcoming this month. Our program director at the, our program coordinator at the rec center resigned and we will be posting that job tomorrow on our website. So if you know anyone who's interested in that position, please have them bring in an application. And then we are also hiring for part-time EMTs. I know we've had a few applications come in, but if you know anyone interested there, we really need some applicants to help fill out our EMS department and help offset some of the overtime our full-time staff members are having to do right now. And then, as Dr. Haniford also mentioned, you know, there'll be some upcoming changes in personnel. So, you know, there may be some other opportunities in the community moving forward with the city of Alba. I wanted to talk a little bit, I've had a lot of questions on street maintenance and what our plan for street maintenance is this year. So many of you probably have noticed our street department has not been very active as far as repaving streets. In the last budget, you know, our budget runs from July 1st to June 30th. So last fall, we overspent our budget for the street department, just in the fall. So when we got to spring this year, our street department has done a lot of things. They've helped us mow at different areas, they've picked up limbs. They've just kind of filled in the gap where we've needed, needed them in the spring. We are looking at starting to ramp up street maintenance a little bit more than what we have been doing currently as budget money comes in for that department. We're planning to start on Locust Street. So for this year, we're planning to repay Locust from 6th Street to 11th Street. I know there's one, one block that we've zipped and it was really, really rough. So we stopped what we were doing there, but we're going to, we're going to start laying asphalt there and getting that ready to go. So that'll be our first area that we concentrate on. And then over here on Flynn Street, oh, over by where Garnett's bulk fuel station is, we've got some concrete that needs to be done there, so it'll take a little bit of time to get that done. But they're going to work on pouring that concrete and starting that process as things kind of cool off. They can still work on, on that. And then the plan is to repave College right over here on the west side of the square. And then if there would be any money left over in time left in the season, probably next year, they would look at 4th Street out here in front of City Hall. So that's kind of the, the long-term plan for the year. You know, it really will just depend on what budget money comes in and how that, how that, as far as how that will be done. So hopefully you'll see them out and about a little bit more and hauling in some asphalt so we can make some progress, especially on Locust Street, so. Are there any other questions or anything that I missed?
Can you clarify, Angelica, for everybody? I think though that the budget that they have for this year for the projects you mentioned is going to entirely spend the five dollar fee.
Yes, so that will include the five dollar street maintenance fee, which is about 130,000 dollars of revenue. And then we also have motor vehicle tax and gas excise tax, which will complete that to about 150,000 dollars.
Are there any other questions from the council? Thank you. Item eight, or excuse me, item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Any citizen desiring to make a public comment should feel free to please step up to the podium and introduce themselves and we will give you two minutes to address the council. Okay. Well, we're glad you're all here this evening. Item eight is a presentation of Kids &amp; Cops Retired Chief Gary Sanderson Scholarships. So I would ask Chief Warcutt, Retired Chief Sanderson, Ronald Vasquez and Ally Harzman to please prepare yourself. As we were coming in, you know, I didn't have very many formal remarks to say, but I've changed them a little bit. Gary, as everybody knows, was chief here for quite a while and he, he made the remark that, well, he didn't do anything, everybody else did all the work. And I said, but you have been such an inspiration, and you have. And therefore, I think it's very wonderful that the department has worked with the community to establish these scholarships. And Ben, I'd let you tell everybody a little bit about.
Okay, we started the Retired Chief Gary Sanderson. I put retired in front of there because when I was just calling it the Chief Gary Sanderson Scholarship Fund, everybody was saying, when did Gary die? He didn't die, he just retired. So we put the retired in front of there. We started this scholarship because while Gary was at the police department as assistant chief and chief while I was there, he was very instrumental in training and getting officers the training that they would want to go into. And not just sending you to training to make sure you got your hours, the state required, but actually training that you were interested in so that you could come back and perform better for the citizens of Alba. Really encouraged that. And so we started this scholarship to encourage that further for high school seniors that are going to be freshmen at Northwestern, hopefully going into criminal justice, not always, but to encourage them to get their training to hopefully be future police officers or attorneys or criminal justice majors, so. That's that.
So we have some scholarships to present?
We have some scholarships to present. So.
Ladies first, Ally Harzman, would you please step forward?
I will, did you mention they're 500 dollars each?
No.
500 dollars each.
Can y'all stand a little closer to each other?
I'd actually like to.
Okay, let me see you, okay, right here. Gary, would you look this way? Yeah, I want to get a picture of you. Get a little closer, Gary, there we go. All right, here we go. That's good.
Congratulations, Angelica. Thank you, students, for applying. Thank you, Ben and your department for having the vision to do this. And thank you, Gary, for inspiring this. This is really a good thing. I think it'll be great many years to come, so thank you, Bill. Item number nine is a public hearing to determine whether the following addresses should be declared dilapidated in constituting a detriment or hazard and therefore a nuisance as defined by city ordinances and abated. Addresses are 719 Ceiling, 11, or excuse me, 116 Flynn and 228 Center. So this being the public hearing, this is an opportunity for anybody that would have remarks regarding these properties to make them in front of the council before they discuss and act upon this measure, the next item on the agenda.
Don't go on my, on the property next door to the one on Flynn Street. I want to be sure if they go in and demolish it, that this time they plan to do the right house there and not my building, because I've had two notices in the past that applied to things on East Flynn Street with the same addresses.
I certainly support your.
And if they go in there and do something with that property, maybe you can also get the water department or whatever it was that tore up my driveway there to service the water supply to that house next door that's on here. They were going to come back and replace the concrete, but it's still the asphalt there. I think it's three or four years now. If anything does happen to that house, there'll be a real big loss around here because I think it's Alba's, you know, main tourist attraction. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments? All right, we will move then to item number 10. Discussion and action on declaration of dilapidation for the following addresses and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance at 719 Ceiling, 116 Flynn and 228 Center. Derek or Angelica won. Derek or Angelica, one, give a little background.
Derek, I would let you talk about the houses, you are more familiar with them than I am.
Well, it's been kind of a funny circle of events. 228 was purchased shortly after I sent the letters, and so, they are going to have it demolished within the next six, eight months, so that one really could probably be taken off, 228 Center. Really, the only one left is 116 Flynn. That one's been complaining about for, ever since I started. It's not one, it's not East Flynn, it's the one for Jenny Minor. And then, 719 Ceiling, they also contacted me after I sent the letter, and they kind of have a plan. It's still got a lien on it from the bank, Community Bank, so they do have plans on taking that one down within, you know, the next eight months as well.
In the same timeframe?
Yeah, in the same timeframe. So, really, after all these letters got sent out, 116 Flynn is still the only one that really, of course, nobody showed up for that one, so it's really the only one left that really needs to be declared dilapidated.
Would it help the owners if there was a declaration on the interleasement?
Not 228 Center.
No.
There's no, it wouldn't benefit them, because they would have a timeframe. I mean, they have, once they have a set plan and we agreed upon it, I mean, it was, they will have, there's a set plan for them to take that one down, so.
So, there isn't a benefit to us declaring that?
No, no.
I know there was one that I saw who was saying that us declaring it dilapidated would be a benefit to them. I don't know why, I didn't understand why.
I think that's-
And I don't know what the property address was.
3411, all of them?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I think that is a different situation than the ones that we have outlined here. I think they contacted the inspector after we had already put these-
Okay.
-on the agenda, or started the process to get them on the agenda.
Okay.
How about those three, you know, 216, just 116, maybe one that really is a layer?
And on the 116 Flynn, I was looking at the letter, and I know for certain that she, Jenny Minor, does not live at 723 Park Street, because I know who does live at 723 Park Street, so I don't know, she would not have received it at that address, and so I don't know from a legal standpoint.
That's the address that we have on the tax records that we, where we pulled that information from. Rick, do you have it?
Sure.
As long as it's-
That's the only address that we have.
Okay.
And we listed it in the legal list, so.
Okay. Just wanted to check, because I knew that was the one. What did you say, timeframe work for the other ones that we're gonna give? Eight months?
Eight months max. 228 Center, a lot of, the issue was, was the yard was getting out of control, of course, the house is dilapidated, it's got a hole in the roof, pests were getting in there, skunks, but people that bought it live across the street, so they're taking care of the yard, and they have towed two or three trailers out of that house already, so they're getting that part taken care of, so really, it's not really gonna be a nuisance for much longer. I mean, they will tear it down, because there's no pests living in there, skunks, house and curvings.
What was the reasoning for the eight-month timeline?
He has the, he bought that to start the process to be able to abate that nuisance. He has another project that he did before this one, so that's why.
So, he's in the middle of, okay.
He's got money tied up in one project, he's gonna take care of that one.
Do the neighbors know that it could be up to eight months before it's taken care of? Surely the people that have been turning it in-
Right, well, they were one of the main-
Well, 228 Center, the neighbor that bought it's the one that's been turning it in.
These are the main ones, yeah. The one that lives on the other side, actually works for the city, so I do know he knows.
What about the one on Ceiling?
The owners of that house, they had Wilson Construction, that guy contacted me and said, he was the one that was talking for them, but he knows, they know that it's out of go and it's gonna take too much to bring it up again, so they do have plans to take it down, once they have the note on the property. So, even trying to get it, I mean, we can declare it dilapidated, just to get it declared, but they already have plans to take it down.
So, since there's a lien on the property, we wouldn't be able to do anything?
Yeah, it's a good idea, the house is in property.
And that's what the current new owners are dealing with now, so, and that's probably their eight-month or so delay. If we take these two off, do we have some others that we would probably go back and look at to maybe bring forth?
Yes.
There are plenty of houses that are on that. Thank you.
Well, part of the agreement being that these people are planning on doing themselves, they understand that, like, taking care of the weeds and grass and stuff, they need to maintain all that, giving them time, and then is there some type of hard pass, all right, we give you such and such, so they don't come back and say, "Well, hell, for this or that," or what, another six months, keeps dragging it out, so, I mean, need to put some-
I mean, if you declare it dilapidated, I mean, that would give, you know, if they were selling it or anything to that extent, they would know, whoever bought it would know that this has been declared and they have to tear it down. They're on the, we just kind of gotta, once you have a verbal agreement, I mean, as long as they're showing progress, I don't see-
It wouldn't hurt the property owners in the event that it was declared dilapidated. I mean, we talked about, would it help, or does it do any, is there any benefit to it? Does it hurt them any if we declare it dilapidated?
I don't think it hurts them. I mean, for us, it probably helps to have it declared that way, in the event that they do not.
I think it'd kind of show that we're kind of serious about it, that, and I'd like to see some type, you know, they put in written agreement saying that-
No, no.
-we are gonna-
I think we just ought to-
We're gonna give them so much time to tear it down and take care of it themselves, you know, spell out it or two, that if it's not, then we'll take over or something like that.
So, we could, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Do we need to actually have them all at one time, the way they're in the agenda?
I would think it'd be actually preferable to probably separate those out.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to declare, we're gonna do all three?
One or one of them.
I know, I know, but we'll go through the list, okay. Have we declared 719 Ceiling dilapidated, and that we, don't need to put in, like, the written agreement, or is that just understood?
I think we authorize the staff to take appropriate action until they do.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
All right.
Is that you, Daniel?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mr. Winters, to declare 719 Ceiling dilapidated and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
I entertain a motion on 116 Flynn.
I'd make a motion on 116 Flynn, declare it dilapidated, and authorize the appropriate personnel to take care of it. Is that close? Okay.
Getting closer.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to declare 116 Flynn dilapidated and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
I have a motion on 228 Center.
I'd make the motion on 228 Center, declare it dilapidated, and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance.
Perfect.
I'd read it.
Show me the word.
Second.
Perfect.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mr. Wallace, to declare 228 Center dilapidated, and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 11, discussion and action to approve an agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alba to provide a school resource officer for the 2020-21 school year. As you, I think everybody's aware, we've been helping the tech center out with the resource officer since 2013, and this is something that the technology center reimburses the city on an hourly basis for the time our officer's been there. Academic year getting ready to start, this has become routine business for us every year to approve these, so is there anything to add?
There is no changes to the Northwest Tech Agreement, so we will, we will see that the school district one next month.
I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve an agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alba to provide a school resource officer for the FY 21 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, and a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve an agreement with Northwest Technology Center in Alba to provide a school resource officer for the 2020-21 school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action to approve Resolution 2020-006, authorizing a change of rates charged for cemetery services and providing for a revised fee schedule. Cemetery hasn't changed their rates since 2006. The staff and board members have looked, and in comparison to cemeteries of similar size, our rates are some of the lowest in comparison, and with the rates that are proposed, these would, were taken into account in our budgeting for this year, so that revenue is budgeted with the increased rates, and they are used to cover the cost for upkeeping the cemetery, so, anything to add?
What is the rate you're talking about, when they buy a block, what is it?
There's two, I mean, what are they, what's the rate you're doing? I sign all of them, there's two.
So, it's for-
The D?
The D, and then the perpetual care on the cemetery, or on the space of the cemetery. And I did not bring my resolution, I was gonna pull it up and look at it, I apologize. I mean, there was a 25% increase to the rates that were already in place previously, so space was $275. There's a fee charged for opening and closing at the cemetery, those were also increased. I think they were increased to about $350. Give me just a second, I'll pull that up, I apologize.
That's fine, I just, I didn't realize what, when you say rates, what it actually entitled, so that's why I was curious.
Huh? Whatever you guys want to do.
Oh.
We've been arguing.
I'm pulling, it's just taking you.
Yeah, you're gonna see, they need to have it after.
You guys are in charge.
Did you want to know specifics, or I have it pulled up, if you want to know what it is, the cemetery space is $350 now, opening and closing, $481.50. Says Saturday and Monday AM, I'm assuming there's an increased charge for Saturday or Sunday morning, it's $615. Weekday cremation is $241, Saturday cremation $309, disinterment $481.25, and then there's fees for the different sizes of stones, or monuments, vaults that get put up, and then stone removal based on the size, and that scales as the size increases.
I just didn't know what the rates entailed, and what they did, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I guess it is, so when you go to place a marker at the cemetery, that's all, there's also a fee associated with that based on the size of the marker, because that also, you know, we have to upkeep, there's upkeep associated with those, you know, we have to go around them, if they start to sink, we have to move them up, so a variety of different fees associated with that.
Those are relatively cheap, they're $20 or $40.
Very expensive to buy. Very expensive to buy.
What?
Yeah, we got it, yes.
Do I get you on that?
Get you on that.
I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-006, authorizing a change of rates charged for cemetery services and providing for a revised fee schedule.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mr. Winters, to approve Resolution 2020-006, authorizing a change of rates charged for cemetery services and providing for a revised fee schedule. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
All right, item 13 is discussion and action into, to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B2, to discuss contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 in Alba, Oklahoma.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, and a second by Mr. Wallace, to enter into executive session for contract negotiations with the firefighter union. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, I would add, is action on contract negotiations with the firefighter union, and there is no action to be considered at this time. Number 16 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
I'd just ask our community if they hadn't, you know, census is still going on, still a little bit of time, if you haven't filled out the census, please do it. Last time I checked, Woods County was like 62% return rate, and that's one of the higher counties, but, you know, every, every one of those counts for dollars for our community.
You know, when we hear, as often as we hear, "Why don't you apply for that grant," you know?
Or, "Why can't we get this restaurant, or 'Why can't we get this,'" sometimes it's population stuff, so.
They all look at those numbers, so.
I'd like to say thank you to everybody that came out for the cruise night the other night, that was a good event, and I bet you had fun, it was a good time.
I just want to say thank you to Angelica, I have had so many people come in and talk to me about our new business, city business manager, and they have been very, very happy. I would be yelled at.
We'll try to keep that true.
Keep that way, please.
And a remark. All right, we will adjourn the city council meeting and call to order the regular Alba utility authority meeting. Shelley, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Sherman? Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 15, 2020. items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 15, 2020, and approval of claims in the amount of $112,629.81, and payroll expenses of $84,323.76. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Wa, Wallace, second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action on change order number one, adding $6,994.83 and 90 days to the Oklahoma Avenue Booster Pump Station project. Angelica, you go ahead.
So, I think I talked about this at our last meeting, that we were expecting this change order. So, originally, there was some, there was a ten-inch valve that must, or a few ten-inch valves that were replaced, and there was some piping that they were not able to reutilize in the pump station. So, they found it was going to be pest, just to bypass that piping altogether. That was going to be most a cost-effective method to do that. So, it was, you know, just about $7,000 to do that, which we, you know, we still have some loan revenue that we can utilize to pay for that. Just, it will just change the remaining amount that we have left to spend on, on a project that we have, you know, may or may not have figured out yet. So, the final thing that we're waiting on is electricity. They had to change the phase of electricity in the, in the building there. And so, we're waiting on OGN to get out and take care of that, and then when that's done, we'll hook everything up, and then we should be back up and operational. When I talked to Bill Myers, our engineer, he felt like the 90 days, you know, that's the beginning of September, that that should more than cover that timeframe. Things that, you know, the parts took a little bit longer, that we, additional parts that we need, took a little bit longer to get here because of COVID-19, and then just, that just slowed the whole process down, generally speaking. So, hopefully, this will be the only change order that we have. There shouldn't be any additional expenses. All of the work, I believe, is done, with the exception of just hooking up the electricity and, and turning it on. But the timeframe of when OGN will get here, just we're at their mercy, essentially, as far as that's concerned. But he felt like by September, we should have that done.
You said all of the work is done, even including the, the new valves and piping?
Yeah, yes, all of that is already done.
And it's just the electricity we're waiting on?
Yes, that is my understanding, Daniel. But we're just waiting on the, the different phase of electricity to be, to be hooked up. And then, there may be some wiring that needs to be done, but essentially, then we should be good to go.
And what's the remaining balance, do you know, of the revenue line?
The, so I know that we had set aside a, I'm, I'm not exactly sure the exact dollar amount, but I, I think it was around $325,000 for that CDVG grant. That was the matching money that we had to come up with. And then, I believe we had about $60,000 left after this project, as it was originally budgeted, and with that money left, so I would say, you know, about $50,000, $50,000 would be a safe estimate, which I know we have some other, a few other needs I need to get to work. The Water and Waste Mark, we're meeting together, so we can talk about what those needs are. But I, I'd like to see what happens with our CDVG grant, if we get that, or if we're awarded that or not, before we make any decisions.
Mindy, what's that, what's that grant for?
That was the grant that we applied for-
Water well field, yes.
-in the well field to drill offset wells.
Any further questions? I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $6,994.83 and 90 additional days for the Oklahoma Avenue Booster Pump Station project.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters, and a second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve change order number one, adding $6,994.83 and 90 days to the Oklahoma Avenue Booster Pump Station project. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
We will adjourn the utility authority meeting and call it order the regular Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Shelley, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Wallace?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Sherman? Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart? Winters?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 15, 2020; item B, approval of claims in the amount of $22,066.39, and payroll expenses of $18,550.96. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I made the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton, and a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you all.